I have also found the chairman, vice chairman, too.
The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has now been called to order. Councilman James Flurry will give the invocation and vice chair will lead us to prepare the...
Let us pray. O gracious kind heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon each one of us. We pray forgiveness of our sins. We pray, Lord, that we will fill our hearts with love as we look toward today's problems, that we'll have understanding and knowledge. I ask now that you continue to bless the administration and all of the employees as they go from day to day traveling on the highways of the city to maintain and to provide the services that we need so best with each day. I pray for the firemen, fire departments, the police departments, as they go out and help folks that need help in emergency times. Now, go with us and God is, forgive us again, I ask, in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join me in facing flag, I repeat, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Councilman Flurry.
President.
Councilman Everson.
I'm here.
Councilman Johnson.
President.
Councilman Corbin.
President.
Councilman Corbin.
President.
Councilwoman Lynch. Your name, Councilman Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the September 24th and 25th.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by Councilman Everson to approve the minutes of the previous administrative conference and council meeting. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Do any councilmen have any awards or distinguished guests elected at this time? Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium two representatives from SWEPCO to make a few comments and a brief presentation to the council. And ladies, if you would, state your name for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Abear.
Karen Whissing.
And we're really honored to be here. Thank you for giving us a few moments of your time. SWEPCO is actually your neighbor, and as your friendly neighbor, we wanted to remind the councilmen and women that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes, and as we all know, unfortunately, we either have been directly affected or indirectly affected by this disease. And to bring awareness, we have both our field employees and our in-office employees wearing pink all month, including these hard hats that Sarah is wearing and our baseball caps for our in-office employees.
One of the reasons that we do this is that we know that health is really important to all citizens within our city. And so, not just getting out in the community and making sure that people are aware of what they can do to prevent breast cancer, but also for our employees. So, one thing that our team does is something called Doc Talk. And these are a handout that we'll provide for you all, that provide information to our employees about ways that they can prevent breast cancer and then also make sure to do regular checkups as well. We also have a gift for each one of you. So, October for us, we call it Power Up for Pink. And so, in addition to these hats, you'll also find us wearing pink in the community when we're out doing community events. And we brought pink t-shirts to invite you to join us in doing that this month as well.
Thank you.
That is why you wear your side.
Thank you. Well, thank y'all for being here and certainly appreciate the reminders. It is something that affects so many people and very tragically. And, you know, for those who haven't been affected by it, you sure would be glad to know what resources are available to you if, you know, it should enter your life at some point.
Thank you so much.
And for those who have been affected by it, I think they appreciate knowing the community supports and remembers that it's a challenge. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
You know, councilman?
Um, Madam Mayor, do you have any awards or recognitions that you'd like to...
Yes, sir. I do have two acknowledgements and then I'd like to make some announcements, if that's okay. Now, this afternoon, we want to acknowledge first Mr. James West, Mr. Jimbo West, who is here today. You will see on the agenda today an item where he's actually giving his own money to help us improve one of our facilities. And I'd like for him to stand and just be acknowledged. We are so very grateful and we're so thankful that we have citizens like Mr. West here in Shreveport that's always willing to give and always willing to help us improve what we do for the quality of life of citizens. So, I just wanted to acknowledge you today, Mr. West. Thank you for being here. And also, we... I'd like to also recognize and acknowledge Mrs. Melanie Bacon, who is the executive director for DSU. And they're also providing money to help us do some things down at Festival Plaza. And so, that's an item on the agenda today also. But, Ms. Bacon, thank you so much for all the services and the funding that you give to improve the quality of life of our citizens. Thank you so much, Ms. Bacon. Okay. We have a few announcements, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I want to thank the neighborhoods that took time, of course, last week to participate in the National Night Out to support the annual community building campaign. Of course, that fosters the type of police-community partnerships that is so essential to make our neighborhoods safer places. So, we want to thank all of those who participated last week. We also had the opportunity to recognize some of our women trailblazers and unsung heroes who work in the city and for the city of Shreveport. We did that last week at the Women Motivating Women Conference. I want to thank Mrs. Angelita Jackson. I think she is working this afternoon and not able to be here, and her team for the effort they put into presenting this conference. I want to thank also Mrs. Arlena Akry, who is upstairs working, I believe, for putting on another citywide job fair last week at the convention center. We had between 500 to 700 people to come out seeking employment. Last week also, we had, and we had a lot of things last week, we had the American Planners Association State Chapters Annual Conference in our city. And I had the opportunity to go by and welcome the group, but Mr. Crawford, ICAO, participated in the roundtable discussion and he was dynamite. And I want to applaud Mr. Alan Clark on a job well done. He serves as one of the officers in this great organization. So, we want to say thank you to Mr. Clark for making sure that Shreveport was selected as the site for this conference. As a reminder for all of us, this week is Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through 13th. We will have several schools touring fire stations. Our Fire Prevention Division from the Shreveport Fire Department will be offering public education programs, and we'll also have a smoke alarm campaign. The theme this year is, again, look, listen, learn. Be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Look for places fire can start. Listen for the sound of the smoke alarm. Learn two ways out of each room. Also, Spark Your Day is scheduled for October 24th from 10 o'clock to noon in the west parking lot next to Independence Stadium. So, for those of you who'd like to go by Spark Your Day, please do so. The other announcement, DOTD is planning the ribbon cutting and official opening of the I-49 interchange project at I-220 in North Shreveport for Wednesday, October 17th, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. It will be held on the interstate at the foot of the Flyover Ramp to I-220 eastbound from I-49 southbound. As you all may know, be aware, this is a $142 million project, four years in the making. So, the governor and the DOTD secretary, Dr. Sean Wilson, are expected to attend this event. So, we are asking you to mark your calendars for this great opening. Next week, we will have the Common Park Groundbreaking Ceremony on Tuesday, October 16th at 1:45. So, please put that on your calendar also. And we're going to do that at the park site at 869 Texas Street. In the event of rain, the ceremony, of course, will be inside of the art station. Councilmembers, I would like to invite you to mark your calendars once again for this year's upcoming Mayor's Prayer Breakfast to be held at 7 a.m. on November 8th at the Bowser Civic Center. We continue to provide our citizens and visitors with a lot to do for entertainment. Since we last met, we've had other events in our city and many events. So, but two of those events, of course, were the Red River Revel and the Film Prize. So, those are the announcements for today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Anyone have anything for Mr. Gray to prop this down? No? No?
I greet you for afterwards. Just an update on one that I had asked you about already, I think, and Rhonda had mentioned it as well. But I'll ask you afterwards. It's a very particular address that has a violation on it. We just needed a status.
Okay.
So, I think it's...
In a particular street?
Yeah. One sec, and I can tell you. I believe it is in the 324-DL, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Got two vacant lots there. The vacant lots will go out, the...
327, I'm sorry.
Right. You got two vacant lots there. The grass will go out this week permitting the weather. The Corner House, I have to issue a citation to them.
Got it. Keep me updated on that one, it would be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Mayor Tyler?
I need to make one correction. When I read Bowser Civic Center, I knew that was wrong. The prayer breakfast this year is going to be held at the Shreveport Convention Center, so I needed to ask our contacts because I thought maybe they changed it or something. But I know it's at the Shreveport Convention Center this year. And that, again, is going to be on November the 8th. And so, we are asking you to come to the Shreveport Convention Center and pray with us. Thank you.
I didn't know if Mr. West, Mr. Jimbo, had something he wanted to...
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for the recognition. My name is James West. I'm the founder of the Corbies Park Foundation. I just wanted to make one quick comment, and I appreciate the recognition. I knew if I kept coming back, I'd get out of here a winner one day. Here I am. Probably the most important thing going on in the park right now is there are six clay courts and five hard courts in Corbies Park. They're over 50 years old. The United States Tennis Association and the Community Tennis Association have condemned these courts, and they have been condemned for some period of time now, perhaps over a year. They've been condemned because of lack of maintenance and dangers to play. And this is one of the most significant parks in our city. These bids are going to come back sometime around October the 25th. I think that the 2011 bond proposal is going to pay for a good portion of this. I think perhaps we'll get through the six clay courts with the money remaining from that bond proposal, but I suspect we're going to run $300,000 to $400,000 short. We are certainly aware of this as a foundation. We've already got $13,000 dedicated to this project in our accounts. We continue to work on it on a daily basis in conjunction with the Community Tennis Association, but we're going to need your help to finish. So, we'll be back soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Crawford has already emailed us revenue collection, and Mr. Brapp has sent us as well. We have a public hearing today on ordinance number 80, so we'll call that to order. And this is to repeal and replace Chapter 36 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Historic Preservation Committee. Is anyone here that wants to speak for or against?
We have two people, or at least one, that has requested to speak that I see here, and that's Mr. Lane Callaway. If you would, state your name and address for the record. I know you are familiar with the process.
Lane Callaway, 9677 Cotaba Drive, Shreveport, 7115. Commissioner and Secretary for the Shreveport Historic Preservation Commission. I'm here on behalf to speak for the commission. Today, you're considering Chapter 80 and a new Chapter 36. Eventually, to consider a brand-new Chapter 37, which is on Shreveport Register. And you'll be asked to add to the Unified Development Code entities called either General Historic Preservation Overlay District, with other districts. And this General Historic Preservation Overlay District is not new. It's been in the United States since 1969, first in California, Los Angeles. And Los Angeles has 20 of them, eight of them right now, over the United States. And it could apply to Shreveport, which I think it can. It depends on how it's going to be applied. HPC is not opposed to change. It has given thoughtful considerations. How would these new ordinances, regulations of overlay districts, impact on historic preservation efforts in Shreveport? Impact on historic properties in the six historic districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places? However, they mess HPC, MPC, and the city entities together to make a seamless for property owners and developers in these historic districts and proposed overlay districts? However, they support Shreveport as a certified local government as designated by the National Parks and Parks Service? So, HPC respectfully requests a delay in considering and deciding on these ordinances until we can step back, look at the entire enterprise, how it fits together. On your, I think you've been given a timeline. I received mine today. And I'm going to make sure the HPC commissioners get a copy of this, first time we have seen it. It said on the 9th, September 21st, HPC unanimously voted to recommend Chapter 36 to the City Council. That's a true statement, but it's not complete. We voted with modifications that we recommended. And so, again, HPC is not opposed to change. If it makes sense for historic preservation, and subject to your questions, that ends my portion.
Tom, go. Thank you for being here and for your service, Lane. It's very appreciated, and certainly, I know, we're all working together to try to figure out the best way to help preserve these important parts of our local culture. Now, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because I do know, obviously, this is a multi-layered approach to addressing this, you know? And so, there are other pieces of legislation. We did discuss this yesterday, and I sent out an email, hopefully clarifying any confusion of what the various pieces were. So, there's this first piece, which just addresses Chapter 36. And then, there is two other portions that have to come for a vote, and then a third. So, that would be four in total. So, it's this one first, then there is a Code Text Amendment to the Unified Development Code and a MAP Amendment to the Unified Development Code that we've put into place some of these overlay districts that we're talking about. Those have to be reviewed, rightfully so, by the MPC, and they would make a recommendation towards us. They also will have opportunity to be able to get additional input from HPC and other stakeholders, historic property owners and other people in the community. So, we don't anticipate that those would come up for a vote until November 13th is when we would be able to receive those recommendations back. And I believe that's, I believe that's on this timeline here, and there'd be a public hearing on the 13th. And then, it looks like, you know, we could do the Chapter 37, which is the final piece. And what that is, is adding that, you know, sort of formalized database of historic properties, so it's very clear to people what's protected. That is kind of the final portion of it, and that could be passed on that following meeting on November 27th. So, that's kind of the timeline. There is some additional opportunity to kind of look into this, but, you know, did y'all have an opportunity? That being said, I mean, my understanding was that y'all had an opportunity to provide those recommendations to the city attorney's office at that meeting and such.
True, but we have not seen how they've been incorporated. We have not, and also, in Chapter 37, we've seen a very skimpy draft. In fact, we've added information to the city attorney's office to help fulfill that.
Yes.
And so, and also, one of the biggest concerns, though, is on overlays. Again, from my research, I've been given to the HPC, that makes sense. It should make sense for Shreveport. But, again, how they are applied, and then also the mechanisms of bureaucracy, if you will. HPC, MPC especially, and the other city entities, is seamless. We have it together. And I think it may be good to step back from the tree, look at the forest, make sure it's all put together before a final decision is made.
Got it.
Well, thank you.
Next, we have, somebody else has anything else?
William Brapp, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak with Lane for a second. I do want to make sure that everyone is on the same page. This is only Chapter 36 that's being considered today. We've been in constant contact. My office has been in constant contact with both HPC members as well as with the sponsor of this legislation. And we want to make sure we emphasize that this is just the first step in developing this comprehensive legislative scheme. And more importantly, under Chapter 36, it's very important to get this legislation through because it is the governing legislation for the operations of the HPC as a whole. Louisiana Revised Statute 25737E states that the Historic Preservation District Commission shall adhere to and seek compatibility of structures in the historic district in terms of size, texture, scale, and site plan, and said commission shall set forth and define guidelines prior to any exercise of its authority. Furthermore, in Section 3621A, it states of the City Code of Ordinances, "The Historic Preservation Commission shall adopt written guidelines as defined in this chapter in accordance with that revised statute. Commission shall set forth and define general guidelines prior to any exercise of its authority." So, before we can even begin to have further collaboration into Chapter 37, and you did reference a small draft that has been generated, and I know Karen of our office has been in contact with you related to the additions of Chapter 36 recommendations, we do want to make it abundantly clear to the council that this is a very important step prior to even getting to the Chapter 37 edits and discussions. And so, that's why our office recommended to the sponsor of the legislation to only take up Chapter 36 at this time.
Yeah, and I can understand that, sir. But at the same time, please understand our point of view. From our experience of implementing the original 36, Chapter 36 ordinance for these many years, working with the state and other federal entities, got that. But we want to do a step back, make sure it all fits together. And then, in the implementation, if 36 has to be the first one, good, make it the first one, after we have made sure it all congeles. That's our point. Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Callaway, as you know, I highly respect you as a historian. Your work is proven.
Thank you.
Your, my understanding from what you just said is that the commission is suggesting and recommending that it be postponed until you can sort of review it in a more lengthy and detailed aspect and understand the series of events or legislations that is forthcoming that any obstacles or issues that you ascertain could be addressed prior to us moving forward with those.
Yes, yes. To ensure it's a smooth, seamless, it's one thing to find them out beforehand if we implement, because once you implement, you start second presidents, you start setting the public thing, this is how it is, nobody's going to change it. Well, you guys are not doing, no. Make sure it's all together. It needs to be done right from the first get-go.
And I'm speaking for the, in the spirit of, you know, cooperation and getting along. And what type of time do you think it would take for you guys to review this?
I'm looking at getting my part in. I'm doing research on how the district is played in other cities, especially those that is incorporated in UDC. I want to get my stuff into, my material in to the HPC next meeting, October 16th. And then, I would say that we can follow that beyond that. I would leave it to them. But also, contingent upon, and that's just one part, what is the draft, R37, the drafts of the overlays, how they play, how they are drafted? We have not seen those yet.
Well, I respect you being vigilant and observing the process. So, my question has to the city attorney. And you've got it spelled out, so that's not the question. The question is, what's the urgency to move on 36 versus doing it with a delay? What do you, what do you, what do you...
See, thank you, Councilman Brapp. And while I respect Mr. Callaway's position, I do have to reemphasize the fact that this has been a very deliberative process. It's included a lot of input from a lot of parties, but more importantly, under the revised statutes that govern the HPCs, for them to exercise any authority, and I'll reiterate, no review, approval, disapproval, or recommendation shall be made by any Historic Preservation District Commission until said commission has adopted rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and standards following a public hearing. That is what this accomplishes today. I understand Mr. Callaway's concerns related to the UDC, but there's further time for additional input into that. And I do also want to reiterate the fact that these are statutes, excuse me, that these ordinances are not carved in stone. There is a time to adjust those as well as needed down the line. For the purposes of implementing this discussion and moving it forward into Chapter 37, I feel that this is, and our office feels that this is the most appropriate structure in order to move this legislation forward.
Okay. Now, I understand. I promise you, I understand. But I'm still, I'm still at a loss on the timetable starting from today versus the timetable starting from two weeks from now. That's what I'm confused about.
I think the clearest way to say it is, from a legal standpoint, as the statutes and the code of ordinances are currently written, the HPC does not have the authority to provide the input that they would need to provide to us until those guidelines and rules and regulations have been adopted pursuant to Chapter 36.
They can't make rec, I'm sorry for speaking out of term, but they're technically not supposed to be doing much of anything right now because they haven't adopted these guidelines. They've been meeting for some five years now and not adopted these guidelines. They're not really supposed to have any authority or action that they can take until they've adopted these guidelines. So, that's what this helps, is to get it in place so that they can have the ability to make an opinion on the other portion of it, so it kind of clarifies.
And we will continue to work with HPC members in order to develop this comprehensive, and to assuage any concerns that Mr. Callaway may have. But again, I reemphasize, this has been a very deliberative process. It is not, it's not been one side, it has not been one office. So, I think it's a very appropriate consideration at this time to ensure that we're complying with what the state statutes require.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I will reserve the speak on this at the time of the introduction, I mean, of the confirmation.
Okay. Councilwoman Lynch?
Let me just, let me make sure I understand what you're saying in English. Okay, so this Historic Preservation Commission, we appointed members to it.
Correct.
Reappointed members to it, I believe, this year. So, what are you saying is not in place? I mean, why would we be appointing people or have this HPC if they are not, if they don't have these guidelines and all this other stuff that you're talking about now?
That's, that's one of the concerns and problems that we're trying to fix now, is that they've never operated with the correct guidelines. And so, this has been a discussion that has gone on before I was here, as far as the discussion of establishing...
So, how were they set up? When were they...
I think I can, I think I can easily answer that.
I'm losing my train of thought here. So, when were they established?
In 2012.
2012?
And then, appointed in 2013. So, the authorizing legislation was passed in 2012.
Okay.
The initial appointments were made in 2013. And the way the original legislation was structured is it essentially created this board and then gave them as kind of their task to, to, so they exist, and I mean, they rightfully exist. I mean, they're not, they're not doing something wrong by meeting, but they, but one of their, the thing that makes their ordinance enforceable is the adoption of these guidelines.
And to further elaborate on what Councilman Everson's saying, I think one of the larva is... of the large agencies, and I think Mr. Calloway will agree with us, is that we've seen a lot more activity, um, in development or construction or new activity in some of these historic districts. And so, the relevance and more appropriately, I guess, the consistency of their participation in that process is increasing. And so, it's something that needs to be remedied as you have different developments going on within these different districts.
Do you agree with that?
With the modification, the HPC, I can show you about five different drafts of general guidelines that we've been trying to get through the system.
Okay, so you, so you recognize that you all have to be, have to have guidelines in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're saying that you all have presented guidelines?
We have tried to get through the system, to begin reviewed.
What system are you talking about?
To begin reviewed.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, at the time, through the MPC, and then through, through, uh, the city council for a final approval. That was modified later on, and the MPC was, was taken out of it. But it's not for lack of trying. We've been trying. But also, we've been doing other things besides just guidelines, getting those through. Uh, we've been, we've been doing, uh, property surveys per request.
Okay, let me stop at the guidelines. Okay, so, so the MPC is out, so this is straight between, so is this like an ad hoc committee? I mean, is it a form commission? Is it a task force?
It's an appointed.
What is it?
It's an appointed.
Okay, so.
It's under chapter thirty-six.
So why were we lacking guidelines between twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, so, so.
This is what we're trying to, that's the issue we're trying.
Okay, so the meetings that you all have been having, uh, with Attorney Strand, with them, is to put these guidelines in place?
And there's been a lot, in, in all fairness, there has been a lot of back and forth and discussion on the most appropriate measure, expanse, and breadth of those guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it has come to a point where these are the recommendations of our office as far as this chap, just chapter thirty-six. And we took into account considerations from the HPC. I think there were some recommendations from Tom Arson, um, in the commi, in the community, and so there was.
Oh, well, that really messed things up, I'm sure.
But, but with those conversations, this is, this is what we feel is, is, one, uh, lawfully, um, appropriate, and two.
Don't tell him I said that, Liz.
Lawfully appropriate, and, and even input from, I believe, DDA, too. Uh, lawfully appropriate, and also, uh, most fair.
Well, this is making more sense now. So there are a lot of hands in this pot. Okay. So, the, the input you all had with Attorney Strand, you all went over everything. I mean, you had input into these guidelines.
Into these, uh, the new guidelines, but not, uh, our last meeting on, especially meeting on July fifth of this year, draft guidelines. And, uh, we, we approved them, uh, but, uh, did not go forward because it was, everything stopped because we're changing now.
You're changing what?
To, to the new thirty-six. So everything kind of became a moot point. So, yes, even the junior guidelines, we've been trying, the last attempt was July fifth of, of this year.
Okay.
And, and then we said, nope, timeout, you got to, we're going to rearrange.
Okay, so have you seen any of what you all came up with in this proposed document today?
Uh, no, ma'am, because they knew any guidelines like that would now go to the MPC, according to, to what this happens. And that's why I am emphasizing on the overlays and so forth, that we need to see the, the, the UDC and so forth, and how they fit in.
Okay, so now you put the, the MPC back in it?
That's the, that's the UDC, there's, there's, that's the difference.
I think there's a lot of confusion.
Chapter thirty-six are just the design.
That's why, I just want to stay with the guidelines.
Okay.
It's in chapter thirty-seven.
Okay, so that's all I want to stick with. So, are the, the guidelines that you referred to, that you all have been trying to get through, to, to give the teeth, basically, to the, to the HPC, are you seeing the elements of that, what you all came up with in this document, that is being recommended today?
No, ma'am. Because they would be now in the preview of the MPC.
Chapter thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'm trying to stay on thirty-six.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm.
Just the guidelines, just the guidelines.
Uh, the guidelines would be, um, we still have for the certificate of appropriateness and for demolitions and like that, is we implement the guidelines that will now not be in chapter thirty-six, will be part of the UDC.
You're saying they're in thirty-six that bleeds over into another one?
The old thirty, the, the current thirty-six, we cross them, and again, we've been trying to get them done. But the change will cause them to be under the, 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 uh, UDC. And that's why we want to step back and look at all of it and have it put together. Am I, am I confusing you, ma'am?
No, you're not confusing me. I think you, I think, I better not say what I think. Uh, I, I, what I, what I want to stay on is, I think it seems like this is an elephant, okay? And you can only eat an elephant one piece at a time.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, it seems that what the attorney office has done is to just take one bite, which is the initial.
Mm, yes, ma'am.
To establish the guidelines for the HPC. That's it.
But the, the, the new, uh, thirty, chapter thirty-six that we looked at and put back in comments on, we strictly on administration, have we organized, like that, not?
That's all this is, that's before us today.
Yeah, ma'am.
That's all we're considering today, is just that portion.
We also, chapter eighty, which is, council's out the old thirty-six. So there's, there's two parts today, as I understand.
Okay, so, so, so what is your problem with thirty-six?
Nothing. The current thirty-six, I don't have a problem with it. It's getting, what my, what my, uh, my concern is, and so HPC, is that we have crafted, time after time, general guidelines to be approved and come through, to be approved by the city council, to be implemented. So that we are, as the twenty said, we are legal and we are in, in compliance. It's getting that, over that hurdle.
Okay, so that's what we have today. So what's, what's wrong with what we have, what we're looking at now?
Ma'am, you have to make that decision.
You're just saying you need more time.
In my, in my case, ma'am, it's in HPC, we want to have more time, we've got, and get all of it, have it pitched together. To include the new forthcoming chapter thirty-seven, to include how the junior guidelines is put into the UDC and so forth, so we know how to implement them.
But you don't have really that authority without having the guidelines in place. Is that?
Chapter thirty-six.
The chapter thirty-six in place, right?
That's why, that's why, that's the advice we've been given. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's.
Hmm?
That's what the attorney is saying. You're not necessarily agreeing with that. I mean, I, I don't know how else to put it. I, I don't, I don't know how to talk in legal sense, you know, around the way. I, I, I didn't learn that skill, you know? Um, um, I just call it like I see it. Um, so I, I, I think I got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Jenkins.
Matthew Prater was clarified. Okay, I'm going to call up, uh, Mr. Magner. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm, uh, Tim Magner, President of the Greenwich Report Chamber of Commerce, live at one-two-zero-seven-five Ashland Way, uh, Shreveport, seven-one-one-oh-six. I just wanted to come and speak in favor of eighty and, and your consideration of eighty and eighty-seven. Again, as you know, we've been, uh, back and forth, uh, a fair bit with the MPC, and, uh, recognize that if we're going to be focused on the UDC and improving the process, that one of the things that, uh, the developer community really appreciates is the opportunity to have a more streamlined process and being able to have all of these elements considered within the UDC and through the MPC process, um, we think is, is not only good for development, but we think it's great for the community as well. As a current resident of a historic building in, in downtown, I appreciate the, the, um, tremendous, uh, impact that historic buildings have in our community, and I think smart growth and smart development are, are part of that, uh, part of preserving that community, but we need to do it in a way that is both, uh, transparent to the developer community and also predictable. And I think having things that are part of the UDC and, and using the existing MPC process is both transparent and predictable and provides us with an ability to be able to, um, move development in, in the right direction. So I encourage your support of these, um, initiatives today. Thank you.
Mr. Wayne.
Councilman Lynch.
Um, so now, how closely have you worked with the HPC?
How closely?
Yes.
Um, not at all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to ask, um, if Liz Wayne would like to come up and speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. Liz Wayne, four-sixteen Cotton Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Important to note that we are very supportive of ordinance eighty, uh, that is on the agenda today. Um, and it's also important to note that we have been talking about this now for five years. Five years. We have been talking about chapter thirty-six, the Historic Preservation Commission Design Guidelines. I brought with me just a small group of people representing some of our downtown historic buildings. Um, these folks right here, if you'll just wave, smile, raise your hands, uh, represent about eight historic buildings downtown. Uh, I would like for you to know that more than fifty historic property owners downtown also support, uh, this chapter, ordinance eighty, but were unable to be here today, but can be here at any point in the future that they need to be. So, just wanted to sound off about our support for this, and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that it? Anyone else to speak?
So I have one.
Tell me if you have somebody who wants to close out. I don't know. No, um, it, my, uh, request to speak earlier was really just to clarify a point that I think is clarified on the timeline, um, but just in discussion, that's why I clicked it, but I didn't have anything else I needed to say.
Okay. Anything else from this lady?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Chairman, as a, out of caution, you might want to make sure nobody else wants to speak before you close it.
Okay. If we have anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak for or against, uh, ordinance eighty, for or against. Seeing none, this hearing is closed. All right, back to, um, Mr. Thompson. Is there any legislation to be added today?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have one. Just one. Can you guess who it is? He sits on the front row.
Sammy Meers.
That would be Sammy Meers to speak on Bravo one-nineteen.
Stop that. Sammy Meers, nineteen oh-one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-oh-one. I saw this today, and I believe it's a wonderful idea. The things I've seen in the downtown area are really looking up very well and very super. I thought I saw a sandbar that was built, too, and that looks good just as well. The aquarium, I've passed by there quite a bit on the bus. It's also another thing I admired very well. One of these days, I am going to visit over there, I just haven't had the chance to. But I hope that if and when I do, I don't want to see a fish that looks like Kevin O'Leary or I'm going to have bad thoughts. Anyone might just at that. A few places to go and eat out are very exciting just as well. I've been to about three of them, and I've really enjoyed it, might even go back again. The Robinson Film Center is doing a great job, too, for those who like to go and see a movie and enjoy buttered popcorn and a good drink for a good price. So, I will say yes to this and approve it, please. There are still a lot of things to come in Shreveport. It's not done by a long shot. When you have the Seaport, Library, Government Plaza, and churches as well that are here in the downtown area, and many other things to come, Providence House, it's exciting. So I'd definitely say yes. Don't leave anything out, because if you do, shame on you. Please vote yes.
Maybe Liz.
Sammy wore his pink today, too.
Maybe Liz could include that as maybe an addendum to eighty and her, or whatever it is, eighty-nine program and work there. Okay, um, that's all I have to publish comments.
Yeah, we, we still gonna, um, have the executive appointments to be considered today?
We have some on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I'm happy to make the motion to take all of them in one.
Okay. I think that was the preference of the mayor also.
Yes, thank you.
These are for the workforce development.
Workforce development, yes. I appreciate it.
So we, we would, uh, need to suspend rules to include them. So I so moved that we suspend rules to include.
We already, we did that.
We're.
When we did it.
I think, I don't think we need to suspend the rules for this.
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the appointments listed under seven C in global. Yeah, if we then go down to the ones down below, I'll make a separate motion, and then we might have to suspend the rule. But at this point, my motion is seven C, all eight of them or whatever.
Exactly, okay. That's right.
It's been moved by Vice Chairman.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Everson for the appointments. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
First, chairman.
I'd like to make a request to suspend the rules and bring up the reappointments listed at the bottom of the agenda for a vote.
That was a little motion you seconded. No, I'm not running the meeting.
Those are the DDA appointments.
These are the reappointment of the DDAs, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Correct.
The motion to suspend the rule, that's, that's seconded.
So, it's been motioned by Councilman Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Bradford for the reappointments.
Well, I guess it's the first, suspend the rule.
Suspend the rules and go back to the reappointments. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Okay, now I'll make a new motion to reappoint, approve the reappointments of the DDA.
Been moved by Councilman Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Corbin to reappoint the DDA vote.
Mr. Chairman, these are for Christine Bailey, Lydia Jackson, and Terry Moore.
Yes, sir.
And Stan, oh, as well as Mr. Varner is African-American.
Yes.
Chamber of Commerce.
Can I do them all in the same motion?
Yes.
Okay, all four, excuse me. So three DDA and one African-American. Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yes, sir.
And just one correction. Here's Stan Varner. I don't see the R on his name.
V A R N E R.
Yes, sir.
Got it. And motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item on the consent agenda, resolution one-seventeen. A motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Vice Chair Jenkins to adopt. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
The new regular agenda legislation, uh, resolution one-thirteen authorizes the Shreveport Airport Authority to execute a permanent right of way and easement to Southwestern Electric Power Company.
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Councilman Fleury and seconded by Councilman Bradford. We have a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, after talking with the city attorney, due to my involvement with SWP, I will be abstaining on this favor.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries with six, I'm abstaining.
Resolution one-fourteen authorizes the mayor to execute and accept a subactive donation between the City of Freeport and Black and Nelson LLC.
Right, right, motion.
What was the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion by Councilman Fleury and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution one-fifteen accepts a donation from Shreveport Greens slash the Quirby's Foundation.
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Jenkins and seconded by Councilman.
Question.
And question from Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. West referenced, uh,
Ms. Chairman, Mr. West referenced, even with these funds, there may be some additional need, and he was going to ask that the city help provide that need. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me clarify a little bit here. So these donations are specific for a project that's ongoing on the golf course currently.
Okay.
He was talking about the tennis courts, which is also part of the park, but it is not related to this particular donation at all.
Okay, I understand. I can just give it for you.
If he wants to donate the additional funds required for that, I think we're all for it. And anybody else out there that's interested, we'd welcome that as well.
Okay.
Bring on the money.
There's no other discussion, please vote.
Ms. Chairman.
Missing somebody. Yes, Councilman Flurry.
I'd like Councilman Jenkins to recognize, I appreciate what he just had to say, but we got tennis courts in Southern Hill, but we don't have any clay courts. Clay courts seem to be real friendly to us older citizens that play with bad knees and things, so I think that's a good idea. Maybe somebody can come forward and help us get more clay courts. And I think it's an excellent thought there. Thank you, Chairman.
Need you to vote, Councilwoman Lynch. Just press the button, right there. Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 121 honors Mrs. Maddie Bradford Watts on the occasion of her 119 birth.
This is a move for adoption.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Flurry. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ms. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. Resolution 118 states the City of Shreveport's endorsement of the NITH LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. Resolution 119 approves the 2019 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work. Resolution 120 accepts a donation from Downtown Freeport Unlimited.
So moved for introduction.
Been moved by Councilman Everson.
Second.
Question. And seconded by Councilman Corbin. Discussion from Councilman Flurry.
Councilman Everson, I drove by this yesterday. This is down on Petita, San Petita. What is the purpose of that building? Do you know what exactly what they're?
I think we've got some representatives from here, from there today, but I believe it's the construction office for Thrash Construction Services.
I believe this is going to be located. It's certainly a building that I think many of us have passed by for a long time, and it needed somebody that had some vision to come in and make it look good again and function well again. And I'm delighted to see the progress that they've made. Oh, yeah. Well, well worth getting that property back into, you know, some sort of activity after years of dormancy. This is a good example of how an incentive like this can turn something from blight that's dragging down the properties around it to one of the best properties anywhere in the area around it. So it's a success story. I look forward to hearing more about it.
There's no more discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ms. Chairman, Resolution 118 was postponed. The movement was introduced. It cannot be adopted until November the 13th. You may want to consider a motion to postpone it until September.
So moved to postpone Resolution 118 until November 13.
It's been properly motioned by Councilman Everson and seconded by Vice Chair. Postponed November 13. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
We're now into introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 80 to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 83 will, is an amendment to correct the alley width referred to in Ordinance 137 of 2013 with regard to the Benson Court closing and abandonment. Ordinance 84 closes and abandons a portion of the alley in Block 1 of the WR Carter subdivision. Ordinance 85 will repeal and replace Section 90-304, and it will revise Section 102-128 of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 86 amends the 2018 Committee to Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 87 amends various articles and sections of the Unified Development Code. Ordinance 88 rezones property located on the northwest corner of East Kings Highway, Bird Coons Industrial Loop Expressway from RA to C4 Heavy Commercial District. Ordinance 85 rezones property located on the north side of West Bird Coons Industrial Loop, approximately 325 feet east of Southwood Drive from C3. That's General Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District. And Ordinance Number 90 rezones property located at 1155 McKinley Avenue and property on North Market Street from I2 Heavy Industrial District to IM-MU Industrial Mixed Use District.
Motion made. Second.
Motion by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Corbin.
By the way.
Motion by Councilman Corbin and seconded by Councilman Everson. Make sure I get it right. I was looking at Councilman Flurry to ask him about 88, so I apologize for that. Motion carries with seven.
And then I'd like to make a motion to postpone Ordinance 87 until November 13.
Second.
And motion by Councilman Everson and seconded by Vice Chair.
And again, this is the second portion of what we just discussed earlier.
To postpone 87 to November 13.
This would give it time to have the additional input that was requested earlier and to go through the NPC process.
Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ms. Chairman, the 2019 budget ordinances are on your agenda. They cannot be adopted. They must be adopted no later than December the 15th, 2018. The 2019, did I say 2018? The 2019 budget ordinances are Ordinance 91, the Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 92, the Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Ordinance 93, the General Fund Budget. Ordinance 94, the Retained Risk Fund Budget. Ordinance 95, the Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund Budget. Ordinance 86, the Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 87, the Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget.
97, gotcha.
97 and 96. Ordinance 98, the Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 99, the Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 100, the Golf Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 101, the Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 102, the Water and Sewer Fund Budget. Ordinance 103, the Budget Funding Contractual Services provided by Sportran. Ordinance 106, the Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 105, the Convention Center Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 106, the Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 107, the Debt Service Fund Budget. Ordinance 108, the Street Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 109, the Downtown Development Authority Budget. It's all lost.
So moved for introduction?
Yes.
And so moved, does somebody get Art Lawson after all the bourbon?
And you may also want to table them until, introduce and table, Jim.
Correct. Yeah, that is my motion. I'm sorry.
Motion to introduce and table by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Flurry. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ms. Chairman, we're now into ordinances on second meeting and final passage. Ordinance 76 authorizes a man to execute a lease subsidiary on property located at 109 Spring Street 2107 Springs, Spring Street LLC for improvements to the subject property, including creation of additional downtown public parking for purposes which benefit the public and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Motion by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance Number 77 amends the 2018 capital improvements budget. This concerns the Shreveport Downtown Airport.
Amen.
Moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman.
Second.
Corbin. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 78 amends the 2018 capital improvements budget. This concerns the regional airports.
Amen.
Moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Vice Chair. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 78 post, notifies Union Pacific and other interested parties.
Need to postpone to our first meeting in November.
Motion to postpone to second meeting in November.
First meeting in November.
First meeting in November by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilwoman Lynch. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 80 is an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 36 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Corbin.
First to.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Bradford.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. It was my intent, Ms. Chairman, at the, at the hearing from some of the commissioners of the Historic Preservation, to move, to postpone, but after the discussion this, this afternoon, I have a different view of that. But before I go any further, I would like to say, when citizens of this city volunteer their time and their resources to work on behalf of any sector of this city, their voices should be heard and respected. They didn't, they don't have to do this. We chose to do this. We ran for office, and we chose to, to put up with whatever comes our way. But I, I heard from Mr. Callaway, and I respect Mr. Callaway. I heard from Mr. Jurnan, and I respect Mr. Jurnan. I heard from Mr. Wayne, and I respect Mr. Wayne. But I think the conversation this afternoon sort of put a new light on it in the fact that the city attorney's office has, I think, sort of cleared up the fact that it's, this is just the beginning of what will be a process. I, I said to this body, the councilmen's, that I'm not eligible for reelection, and this is an election year, that I wanted to clear up any outstanding legislation that, that we can clear up while they're here who are familiar with the various legislative items that have, that has been pending, and this is one of them. I don't think, according to the city attorney, and I agree, that this will not in any way impede the process by adopting this ordinance. I think the Historic Preservation Commissioners will have opportunity to give as much input, broad, specific, generic input that is, that is necessary to move this legislation forward as time permits. But I would like to, I'd like to take this step at this time so that we won't, again, this is election year. Six of us may not come back, but I think in, in, in...
I'm coming back.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I am definitely not.
But, but in the spirit of continuity and ensuring that, that some process would be ongoing and not, not for the new council to take on something that they will be so unfamiliar with, I'm going to support the, this, this ordinance, and I hope even before, according to Councilman Corbin, after this meeting, we got five, five more official meetings. Five, that's, that's not very many, so we can hopefully get some, get some, get some work done in those last five meetings. So, Ms. Chairman, I, I support the, the move of this resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Is there any other discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries with seven.
We have one other ordinance, Ordinance 81. There was some discussion about postponing it.
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me get back to that point on the agenda. I thought we made that motion at the last, but I guess I need to do it again.
Second.
Yeah, so, so moved to postpone. I thought we did already postpone that to November 13th, but if we need to do it again, I'll make that motion again.
Moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilwoman Lynch. If there's no discussion, please vote.
I need some more time to research that.
Yes, well, we figured everyone might. I know. I, I had a chance to go to some meetings with them and hear about it, but if anyone needs additional information, certainly feel free to reach out.
Motion carries with six. Well, Councilwoman Lynch didn't vote. She did have to vote, ma'am, because she's second.
Since she's coming back next time, we should all sit close. She doesn't, so you can help her educate on how to vote.
The smartest lady up there.
Ms. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the tables.
Okay. Well, Mr. Green, what you come for?
We have one private standards appeal.
Are they here?
There.
Oh, yes, he is.
At least that's what he told me.
All right. Our case today is 219 Columbia, and Ms. Wood is here. She has secured a contract to have the, to start the foundation work and remove a tree and to get the job to rolling, and she is here. So if you have any questions of her...
Is that the building we saw yesterday?
Uh, no. You saw the building downtown yesterday.
Well, this one, this one did come up briefly. Just for, for reference, I'm sorry, Terrence, I know that this case has had, you know, a couple of stops and starts. Could you remind us when the first, so this first inspection and the current violation was from 2117?
Right.
But there, were there previous violations on this property?
Yes, there were previous violations with Ms. Angel, who is Ms. Wood. That's her mother.
Okay. Thank you for being here today. I know we, we postponed this for those in the audience who aren't accustomed to this. Typically, we do these hearings at our Monday work session meeting, but the property owner in this instance wasn't able to be, be at the meeting yesterday, so we postponed this hearing for today. We had most recently postponed this to give some time for action, and we were requiring a, you know, a permit to be pulled and some work to, to happen, and we haven't seen that happen yet. So we have invited the owner here today to tell us what they have done, what they are doing, and, and let us hear what that timeline might be.
Okay. I finally got my email from the contractor and, which will, he's got it, he's got it in like three phases to start, because there's a certain order to go to get this done. He currently is in North Carolina right now. He currently is in North Carolina right now, working on a project. He has people here, he has them ready and posted to start progressing on something first thing in the morning, if that's allowed, and I'm just looking forward for the opportunity for that to take place and be able to take place and get some progress going, visible progress going. And so your jobs won't be so strenuous when you have to revisit something over and over and over. So I'm just happy that I have somebody and would like the opportunity to rehab that particular property.
Okay. So just for perspective here, I mean, I certainly, you know, have, I mean, I allowed a postponement earlier, and we didn't really see a lot of result. I have heard a number of complaints from neighboring property owners, and so, you know, it is, it's been an ongoing issue, that is not, that is not, you know, I don't want that to be misconstrued in any way. It is something that we have to take very seriously. This is in a neighborhood very close to a lot of other homes, of people who have worked very hard to have what they have, and they're very proud of what they have, and it's their home, that's where they lay their head at night. And they don't necessarily like doing that, when they feel like the home next to them may fall, and, you know, may have major issues going on. That being said, you know, the best-case scenario for this property is to see it repaired and to see it not go to tax sale, to see it not, you know, like, see it stay in a, in a condition where it can be fully owned by somebody, where it can be insured, where it can be, you know, those type of things. So, I mean, it's my hope that this work can get it there, but I don't know how much, how much faith I can put in that, do you know what I mean?
I understand.
It's been a difficult process, we've not seen a lot of, not seen a lot of progress. So I am open to it, but I would appreciate the input of other council members, I would like to hear. You know, I am open to the idea of a very short postponement to see if this work does indeed take place, and if we see some visible progress, then perhaps we can continue that. We have done that to some degree of success with some other properties. However, I will say, I am also very much at that line, where if we do a short postponement and I don't see any progress, I am not interested in continuing another postponement. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'd be glad to hear input from others.
First, I have Councilman Corbin, followed by Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to follow up on Councilman Everson's comments, this particular violation started in February of two thousand seventeen, so eighteen months have gone by and nothing's happened. And, you know, we have, since May, we have every month given another month to see what was going on based on promises. I'm certainly not an engineer, but I look at the pictures of that house and what appears to be going on to the internal structure, and I'm certainly not qualified to say if it's worth saving or not. It may have sentimental value, and I understand, because we hear that quite often. If, if a contractor's going to show up tomorrow, and I guess they've not pulled a permit yet, Terrence, but if a contractor is going to show up and start doing work tomorrow, then I want to be sure that you've talked to Mr. Green and that you understand what needs to be done first to address the property standards issues, because we have many instances where somebody comes up with a structure like this and they start doing things on the inside, or this or that, which does not help the neighbor's case much at all.
Right, we're not going to focus on the inside right at the moment. I was told that the outside is what we needed to focus on, so the tumor that's on the top, that's going to be totally removed. The sagging, that's from the underneath side that had water that got to it, that's going to be addressed already. The contractor did say there's a certain order that they would need to go in to ensure that they don't have to revisit something they've already repaired, so that's where we're going, that's where we start. Cleaning and clearing of the found, the under part of the house will start first thing in the morning to get anything out of the way that would prohibit them from putting a support beam there.
I would hope that if you've talked to a contractor, that you have a timeline for this, and we're not doing phase one, and then we're going to sit a while, and we're doing phase two and going to sit a while.
I think he was in the middle of working, and he was trying to get something done where he could get it to me. He's in North Carolina, but it's got some people here that's going to start, so that's, it's kind of, was a little informal. I apologize for that, but I have full faith in him and their company. They travel to do work across the United States. I just, I happen to have full faith that he will do what he's telling me he will do.
I hope they do, and I hope that you will communicate with Mr. Green if there's any slowdowns in this, so that he can come back and communicate with the council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, Councilwoman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me be clear, you said permit have or have not been pulled for this project?
Because what needs going to be started?
Have or have not?
No, I have a permit for the porch to come down, but the clearing, the prep work has to be done in order to get that, there's bushes and other things that needs to be taken and removed and other loose things.
So they had pulled one, one permit, and some additional permits at some point, but they had pulled one.
Okay. So, let me just say it like this, Ms. Wood, is it?
Wood.
The credibility of this council, now, all of our districts, my district for certain, we have a lot of abandoned and dilapidated structures.
Yes, sir.
A lot. We try to the best of our ability, respond to those in a most appropriate way. Yes, there are people that come to say, listen, I really want to, I really want to, I really want to fix this up. But, 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 but our credibility depends a lot on our consistency. What is expected of one is expected of others, and I think the councilman has said that this is, this is a eighteen-month postponement, and nothing tangible has started. What is your intention for this property?
Well, to first get the front where it's pleasing to the eye.
The complete, the complete intention of this property?
The complete intentions, it's either to get it to a spot where it totally can be sold and for to a family that can move right in, and if we don't sell, then it would be to retain it and possibly be a rental. It's, it has been a job just to try to find a contractor that would stay and do, this is my third person that I've been in contact with. My first one, the company, he decided, I'm done, I've done this for a long time, I'm not doing it anymore, and he resolved before we even got started. But it's the, the second one, he came out and looked at the house and said, the house is plum, the house is sure, there's nothing shifting in the balance of the house, it's right there in front. The dormer doesn't help, the waterfall, so now the person that, and he decided, he's from California, and he's going to go back to California, after he gave me a beer.
Ms. Wood, let me just finish, my, the other councilman needs to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighteen months is a long time. We have qualified contractors here in this town. I mean, we have, we have a, we have a directory of.
Right, these were local people. They were local people.
Well, I'm just saying that we can, there's a lot of, if the fair share department can help you get a contract, even minority contracts are available to help do this, and again, the delay and others seeing what we do here would have, would have an effect on, on what we would do with the next person to come forward. So.
May I make a comment on what you just told me?
Sure.
No one has ever, ever told me or offered that they could help me find a contractor, nobody's ever said.
Have you requested help finding a contractor?
Well, I'm here and they know what my problem is, I would think, but I, I don't know, I didn't know that I could request.
From this point on, because.
But I have one now.
Okay, I'm just saying, I think, but that, that doesn't mean that it's going to get to patrician. So my last question, I have two questions, actually, what, what values is this to you, is this sentimental? The councilman says, is there any sentimental attachment to this property?
Well, you could say that, I mean, it's my mom's home.
It's her mother's house.
It's my mother's home, but that, that doesn't even come into the fact, you're going to laugh at what I'm about to tell you. I'm a crafter, I'm a repurucher, I see something that's ugly, I'll make it pretty. That's just in my spirit, God made me that way, and I believe that to this day. That whole house is fine, it needs TLC, it needs updating on the inside. The problem that we're facing is that ugliness that's on the outside, I, the house does not need to be torn down.
And, and the spirit of this council, from my experiences on this council, is that we would rather structures to be rehabilitated than to be torn down.
Yes.
We, we, we don't like to do that, but at the same time, we don't like eyesores and, and those kind of things cluttering up our neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
So I think, I think I understand, but I am going to support the councilman in the fact that whatever extension we give would be very limited with stipulation that something got to happen within the next few days that, that will give us encouragement that you're going to finish this job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lynch.
I feel like y'all are kind of roughing this lady up a little bit.
Too old now.
Wait, let me finish, I have a floor. We've certainly had buildings downtown that people were seeing coming into our city that have gone longer than eighteen months. And we gave them opportunity and opportunity and opportunity, that's all I'm saying. I mean, there have been, we've, you know, cut some off, and then others we've let go a long time. And so, you know, I don't want you to feel, you know, ganged up on, okay. I mean, I'm looking at the house, I, you know, I kind of think it needs to be torn down, but, but I, you know, respect what you're saying that you want to do, okay? We only have five meetings left, so this is going to be, I mean, I would support a really short period of time. I don't know what you have in mind, Councilman Everson, but I think, you know, I probably wouldn't go more than thirty days if it was me, just so that we can keep tabs on it, that it's resolved and not passed to the next council, as we've seen some things done. And I mean measurable progress.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
And, I mean, we can make a decision to just, you know, let it go. You're going to have to be ready for that, if we have not made any progress. That that may be the decision, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Just for the record, we don't bash and beat up on women up there.
Well, I don't know.
No, we do appreciate Ms. Wood being here, and, but, and I agree with both sides of it. I mean, that's why these are never incredibly easy issues, I mean, this is a house I'd love to see saved. I see the potential in it, but I also see the, you know, the need to regulate it. That being said, I think there's a compromise that works here, and so the city attorney's office made a suggestion of something that I think could work pretty well. And so I'm going to make this motion, and then it may take me a minute to kind of make sure that I read it right and that it means what we think it means, but let me, let me go ahead and make this motion first. And essentially, what this is going to do is we're going to kind of move to demolish pending the start of work. So if you have work that starts at some point within this timeframe that's stated in here, then they, then they won't demolish. You know, if no work is started during that timeframe, then they can move forward with demolition. That being said, she still has the right to appeal to district court. So, I mean, there is still one other appeal level, so I think that this is a good course of action. Let me read it, and if y'all see otherwise, that is, that is something I can live with as well. But this is a motion to approve demolition. The execution of the demolition shall be stayed for five days pending work commencement. A day-for-day accommodation for weather may be approved by property standards. Failure to commence work within the allotted time shall nullify the stay and make the demo, the demo order executable. And that is.
But she did say that she's going to start tomorrow, work is going to start tomorrow.
In the morning.
If she does that, and or, you know, in the next five, few days, then, then it's stayed.
Councilman Jenkins.
Written like it came from a lawyer. We have never set up a deal like that. I would rather we give her two weeks. Come back here in two weeks like we've done thousands of times and show proof that she's done work, rather than this.
I'm certainly open to that as well. I'm certainly.
Kind of approach, because I hate for somebody to say, well, why, why did you use this special?
Just an attempt to try to, to try to make it, you know, to try to keep the immediacy on it. But I certainly am okay with that two-week, you know, two-week postponement as well. In effect, gives us a chance to do that.
I think you, you read, you read the statement, but it wasn't, it wasn't second. So I could support Councilman Jenkins' suggestion if he wants to make a motion.
Sure.
Okay, let me get one, one question, Ms. Wood, yes, you have one more thing you want to say, please?
Yes, as it was a problem yesterday, for me, to be able to attend the meeting that was set up, the date, is I have two young grandbabies that I take care of, and I work my daughter-in-law's schedule, she's a neonatal ICU nurse, and so whatever her schedule is, that's what I work, if it falls on the meeting days, that makes it hard for me. They're two and one years old.
You can take the recommendation back for me.
Okay, I have a concrete proposal. My concrete proposal would be, in two weeks' time, I would like evidence corroborated by Mr. Green that some level of work has been done, and a signed contract with the contractor emailed or sent to us so that we know somebody is, is actually engaged in this pursuit. I think that, and you don't have to necessarily be here.
Yes, sir.
We kind of get our answers at this progress. Again, making my motion, my motion is. Stand by a second, are you okay? My motion is, by the next meeting, I guess I'm voting to postpone, that's my motion, two weeks.
Twenty-third, yes, sir.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-second for property standards.
For property standards.
Twenty-second.
And then by the twenty-second, that we have a signed contract between you and your contractor, wherever that person is, and some level of corroboration by property standards, that project has been initiated, i.e., have somebody go by and make sure something's.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved, that's second. Moved by Councilman Jenkins and second by Councilman Bradford to postpone for two weeks.
Okay.
October twenty-second.
So I just need to have something visible, seeing that progress.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that what?
No, we're saying that the stipulation is that property standards, Mr. Green's department, you do have, Mr. Green, you have an inspector that's available to monitor. you do have, Mr. Green, you have an inspector that's available to monitor and give us a progress report. Okay.
Great.
And, and a signed contractor.
Okay.
You'll have a chance to talk with Terrence, so be quiet.
You understand what we're asking. Okay.
All right. Mr. Green, was there anything else you had to say? Is that it?
No.
Okay, please vote. Motion carries seven. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing some good work get started.
Me too. I'm excited.
All right, we have no other appeal, Mr. Thompson?
No, sir.
You got current report?
Uh, we have an executive session immediately after the meeting.
Immediately after. Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committee?
Yes.
And seeing, huh? Okay, we have an executive session.
Special.
Mr. Chairman, additional comments from the council members?
I'm going to read.
All right, 'cause we also have public comments.
Oh, we do?
Yes, sir.
I thought you were getting rid of the room.
I'm the mayor.
Okay, I thought we were getting rid of the room.
I just have one last announcement if I may make that.
Thank you.
Get your brother's back. Okay, uh, Madam Mayor.
I just have one last announcement. Mrs. Shelley Regalwood is announcing today, and we're asking people to think about the month of October. All of the employees in our Spark Department will be wearing pink every Friday in honor of breast cancer awareness, and so we wanted to make sure that our citizens know about this month being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we're asking people to think about those who, um, families have suffered because of this disease and those survivors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any council member have any additional communications? Councilman Flure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take the opportunity at this time to point out to different citizens and members of the administration that we're continually being overwhelmed by eighteen-wheelers being parked in our communities. It's gotten where that we, it's just overwhelming. The same trucks, tankers, are parking on property that's located in neighborhoods where children play. The city police department has addressed this with a civil ticket. We and the public safety, and I'm saying this at this time, I'm asking the city attorney to please help us to develop some type of legislation that we can put some teeth in it, because they keep getting cited over and over and over, and it's a civil matter, and we're not getting anywhere. So, I'm asking the city attorney with the public safety committee of the council that we can possibly come up with something that will help this problem, because it's growing and growing and growing. And citizens call, they're irritated because of the trucks that are parking in the neighborhoods that are pulling the value of the property down and safety concern of children playing around these trucks, and so we will be addressing that. I know we only have a short term left of this council, but we must look into it, Mr. Bradford, and see if we can come up with something that will help the problem. Thank y'all very much.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilman Bradford? Mr. Chairman, I'm only gonna make this statement just because I feel compelled to make it. No responses necessary. A little baby got shot last night. Shootings and gunplay and homicides are still, are still, are still a sad issue. I don't know the solution, but I know we gotta come up with a solution. I mean, there's no debate that some of these are domestic. But at the same time, there has to be a response. Citizens are looking for us to respond, and the only reason I'm saying something is that I don't want nobody to say that a baby got shot last night and it wasn't even mentioned at the city council meeting. If there's a way, there's gotta be a will to deal with this criminal, this criminal culture that is perpetrating throughout this city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford? Uh, Councilwoman Lynch?
Uh, I don't want Councilman Bradford to think that nothing would've been said about that, because it happened in my district. And I know we talked a little bit about this yesterday, uh, Mayor, and I don't intend for the next, how many days we have left on this particular council, I don't intend on continuing, and this is a family show, isn't it? Family meeting. Um, I don't continue, I don't plan to continue getting my behind chewed out about these sewer projects and how these areas are being left. I get another call today on my way to the city council meeting, and the very street that this hump, I don't, the baby and the mother got shot on last night, Barbara Street, the condition of that area and how it was left, I understand, after sewer work was started, then they were told that the contractor was fired because they messed up or did something, and that the city, and I'm just repeating this third-hand, uh, that the city, they were told that the city was doing something with insurance or warranty or something like that, and that's been since February, and it still has not been addressed, and this is what that area looks like. Well, it looks like our agenda right now. I guess they're getting it to happen.
Goodness.
Okay. So, this is one, one, this is, he's just showing the intersection. I think it's Marston. This is how they left somebody's driveway. Um, well, he took that picture to me. He wanted to talk to you about it.
What's that?
That's what you're saying. Your city at work.
Oh.
Okay. That was another one. I guess, I think they have this on like a ten-second delay. Okay, this is still there since February. Anyway, he's just showing, and he sent me, I don't know, probably about ten pictures altogether. Here's another. I mean, but they just left it. Now, you know, they followed the proper processes, uh, protocol in terms of contacting, um, I guess it's the clean water CDM, talking with the city engineers' office, talking with the water sewer. Uh, I just got the call today. Wasn't aware that this was happening there. Um, I don't know what, I mean, I don't have a sufficient enough answer for this. I just don't, and, and I'm, you know, I'm getting more and more calls about it. I don't know if we need a new contractor. I don't know if we need more project managers to make sure that these projects are being completed timely. I'm just kinda at a loss, um, as to how to explain this to my folks, and I, you know, um, I don't really have a good explanation at this point for some of what is still occurring, and now that the project is moving into another phase and they're going to other areas, but I still have areas like this, you know, looking like that. Um, and, and, like I said, this has just been two, but there are others. And I know we're gonna meet, you know, again, but I'm looking for specifically how we're going to move forward with addressing the remediation in Phase One, because I'm sure this is not showing up on that punch list that, you know, we went over about a month ago, saying, "Oh, we're, you know, we're almost finished and we only have, you know, a few left. We've, you know, substantially completed all the remediation projects," and, and then, but I'm still getting, you know, calls, and I'm still getting pictures showing the exact opposite. Um, and, and, um, I'm not, this is not against the mayor. There's something going on with the contract, the contractors, structures, something, but I expect it to be pinpointed what that is, where the breakdown is occurring, and how we're gonna address it, because the word that I was hearing in the last week from folks chewing on my behind is that they're feeling neglected, uh, that they're feeling that they're not getting the response. The lady I talked about yesterday, Ms. Shirley, uh, at Ellison, said that the contact with CDM stopped returning her phone calls, will not return her phone calls. The other person came out, made certain commitments, and did not follow up on those commitments. So, you know, if I have to go to CDM's headquarters or these contractors' headquarters, something is, something is gonna happen. I cannot have my constituents living and driving in these type of conditions, day in and day out. It's not acceptable to me, and I, I believe that it is within our control as a city to effectively address it, whatever that is. I'm at the point now where something is, something's gonna have to happen, you know, in terms of, in terms of, um, addressing this issue, okay?
Since Barbara Street is in my district and not in District F.
So, you want me to send the pictures to you?
I already had the pictures, and I already spoke with, uh, Mr. Furloin about the, uh, the contractor, because of poor performance, they were terminated, and so now the bonding company is taking over, which was a process.
I understand that.
And so, that's, that's, that's where we at now, and I explained that to some of the citizens. They called me, and to those who didn't know that that was my district and whoever called you, and that's the answer I can best give to them, and if need be, Mayor Tyler or Mr. Furloin can speak more on it. I don't know about Ellison Street, but I know that, uh, they tried to get in touch with you earlier, uh, last year on some issues on Ellison Street, but we were talking on Barbara. That's what I spoke to several other people. I actually went out there and met them out there.
I understand. I understand.
Okay, and if I can, let me just respond as I did yesterday, um, and I'm not sure there's another side to all, to every story, and, um, I know that we've had the conversations with the amount of work that's going on in both districts. We've spent more than $200 million dollars just in District F alone on sewer projects, because we had the, you know, we did the assessments and found that, um, that's where a lot of the really bad sewer issues were occurring. Um, so, you know, when I look at the pictures, I don't know when it occurred. I just, I'm only hearing one side, and I'm not going to point fingers until I can, you know, find out the full story, but I can tell you that we have been pushing to make sure that restoration was occurring, because we have a lot of work that is going on, more than we've had in a long time in decades in this city, and we're gonna have some of these problems, but we shouldn't have as many if we're doing it in a timely manner. And as the mayor of the city, it's my responsibility, and I'll take on that responsibility. I will say that we have done a lot of work in that district, and even the streets, and I hear from the citizens over there, they love their new streets, 'cause we've done a lot of streets in your district, uh, councilwoman, and so, you know, I wish they would tell you some of the good stuff that they tell me, but-
No, they do tell me the good stuff.
Okay, so if I can finish.
Yeah, you can finish.
The sewer projects, I know have been an issue, and we are finding remedies. Yeah, we have terminated some people because they weren't doing right, and we're going to get it right. I'm gonna see to that, because that's my responsibility, and so, um, for those people who still have major concerns, have them to call us. When they call Mr. Crawford or myself, we make sure that our people follow up. I can't do it if I don't know about it, and so I'm just asking for that opportunity. Um, you know, I know it's going to be difficult, because we've not addressed the sewer system in thirty-five years, and so we're trying to get it done, and I know that it's painful, but I'm asking citizens, when they feel that it is not, the restoration is not occurring, just call us. Mr. Crawford works around the clock, and so do I, weekends and all, trying to make sure that we are doing what needs to be done. We have to know about it, though. I have not heard from the people that you've spoken to, and it doesn't mean that they haven't followed the, you know, the process. I, I can't speak to what you've shown me today, because I don't know when that work was done, how many weeks ago. I knew what you said, but I gotta hear the other side, because I know that we've had more than one discussion, very, very detailed discussion about restoration, and so I'm going to address it. I just need to be able to get those contact numbers, so that I can make that, um, I can address it, and so I can get the other side to see where the breakdown is, 'cause I need the other side of the story.
Well, thank you, Ma- thank you, Mayor, um, and of course, I'm not here to debate with citizens when they report something. They live in these communities, they're driving in and out every day. If they say it happened in February, I can only report what they, what they say, because they live there every day. I don't, I'm not on that street every day. You're not on that street every day, but they are, and so I take what they say and relay that information. Um, and as you said, we can take it from there and, and see what we need to do to, to address the situation.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't, uh, you know, assume that they're not, you know, telling the truth. Sometimes, you know, one month, maybe, something may be actually one month, but it may seem like six months to them, when you have to deal with it every day. Um, but as you acknowledged, this is not our first, you know, discussion about the remediation projects in Phase One, most of them occurring in District F. I think we both are on the same page from past discussions, that, um, things didn't necessarily, you know, go like we wanted them to in terms of the remediation, um, and what I'm saying is that we're- Um, and what I'm saying is that we're, we still have, seem to have, an issue going on in various parts of District F. In terms of the remediation, it has not fully been resolved, and it certainly has not been resolved, to, to, to a lot of people's satisfaction, um, for various reasons. And so up until this point, we have addressed a lot of it. But in that they've moved on to Phase Two, I want to make sure that these areas are not forgotten and that as we get those reports, um, of areas that have not been remediated satisfactorily, that they are gonna be addressed.
Absolutely.
And not seven, eight months. Because even though I understand we're going through, and we had this issue at the, at the, um, before they put in the new bus terminal. If there's an issue, even with a warranty, even with a contractor, do we just, and I understand the process, and we'll double check on, on whose district this is in, but I understand the process, but do we, because I'm, I'm in the insurance, I understand that, but do we allow the condition to remain to what, to the citizens, what seems indefinitely, while we're going through bonding and warranty and all of that?
Amen.
I mean, to leave?
No, that's unacceptable.
Okay.
We, we would never do that if, if I know about it.
Right.
If we gotta do it and then charge somebody later.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm their mayor, and I care about what's happening in these communities, I just need to know.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're on the same page with that. Thank you.
We have the following request to speak.
Ms. Sandra Mack.
Be glad, sun rolling as well.
Okay. And next up, we have Mr. Bill Weiner. And just a reminder to everybody doing our public comments, we have three minutes. Please start your comments with your name and address.
Bill Weiner, number two, Longleaf Lane, Shreveport. I'm here today, not because I want to be. Uh, I'm here to share something with you that you need to know. About a month ago, I got a call from a prestigious architect in Shreveport. He had seen the plans for the Millennium Project, which is part of the, uh, big grant. And he was very disturbed by what he saw. He called me, and I couldn't believe what he said. I went out where he saw the plans and I saw them. It was just as bad as he had thought it was. We are all, the three architects, for affordable housing, but we want it to be done correctly. And what is being proposed is just outrageous. Uh, I contacted the mayor, three-page letter, saying that the three of us would like to meet with her, put the plans down, put tracing paper over it, and show what was wrong and how it could be fixed. After two weeks, I didn't get an answer. I went through the gatekeeper and got an answer in a week, and she said she wouldn't meet. So, uh, I then went to Community Development to try to see what could be done to fix this. It's not that difficult. Uh, met with Bonnie Moore, and she told me that we couldn't have seen the plans, they're not out, but we've seen them. I've even got the cover sheet here on my phone, and she wouldn't meet with us.
Now, where did y'all see the plans?
Huh?
Where did y'all see the plans?
I don't think I'm at liberty to tell you. No, no.
I mean, I just, I haven't seen them.
Okay, okay, no, I'll tell you once. I saw them at a subcontractor. It was about 100 pages of plans, about that thick, was a subcontractor taking off bids for the general contractor that was hired by the RFP to do the project. And I don't want to get this person in trouble, that's...
Sure, I got it.
Okay.
Could you give a hint?
Huh?
Could you give us a hint?
Yeah, he's in Shreveport.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, and Bonnie also told me that HUD was coming to Shreveport and, uh, having a meeting that next week, and asked if I could go. And she said no, and I didn't go. Then, the next movement, I went to the Shreveport Housing Authority, which I've learned is not part of Shreveport, uh, tried to meet with them. It was even difficult to get through the phone, uh, to find out when their meeting was, but I finally got that, and the meeting was on a Thursday at noon. Posted, I went out there, Thursday at noon, and said it's gonna be tomorrow.
Okay, time expired.
Huh?
Time is expired. Thank you.
Wait, can we wrap up this, I mean, were you, were you able to get to the meeting?
No, well, can I continue? I think it's important for y'all to know what's going on.
Can we, we'll see. Can I ask for another minute?
Yeah.
Sure.
Can you put one minute on time, Mr. Tanya, please? One.
Should I start? Okay. At the Housing Authority, it was difficult, you couldn't go into the room with a board meeting, you had to be escorted through locked doors. Uh, I tried to speak, I was the only person in there, and they said I had three minutes, things were on the agenda. I had already spoken to the executive director to try to get on the agenda, but they wouldn't let me speak, so I left. And, uh, I talked briefly to somebody at the NBC, the DVA, they were never involved, they don't know what's going on. And I've concluded from all these people who should know and who are not talking to this group, who wants pro bono to show them what's wrong and how to make it better, that there's some kind of collusion going on. And I'm in, I hate to say that, that's why I didn't want to be here, but it's obvious. And I am now trying to work with HUD in Washington to clean this up, and what bothers me...
Mr. Weiner, uh, so the time is up now, but, um, but I appreciate you sharing these concerns. Um, I, I don't know that I got a, I don't know that I heard from you directly on this, but I did at least at some point hear some concerns about this. And I, I reached out, I hadn't heard back to the extent that you have yet, um, but, but it is my understanding that there is a significant amount of pro, process, um, that still has to happen before this is moving forward. So I'm not sure what you saw, but that's why I ask.
Who is in charge? I don't need to go...
I mean, e- essentially, it's the, uh, the Housing Authority. I mean, it's the Housing Authority who's building the project.
They got the grant?
But they will have to get the appropriate, um, you know, like anybody else who would build a project, they're gonna have to get the appropriate approvals through permitting and all of those other kind, you know, all the other regular steps would apply here. In addition to those steps, um, you know, they've got to have their, um, approvals through the public process of HUD.
Who in the city has training in architecture and design that can approve what they're presenting, because it's awful? And, and I can't find out, this is three...
Mr. Mayor Tyler, real quickly, and...
Let, let me just, let me, let me see this. First of all, HUD came down for a meeting, and let me, I'll say this and I'm, I'm done. HUD came down for a meeting to talk to us about the grant itself. There has not been an architectural design done yet. HUD will approve that, they have the expertise to select and to approve, you know, the, the architects, whomever, to be able to do this project for our workforce families. And when that time comes, then we'll all know. But right now, we don't have the plan. We are going to work on and work with HUD. We will work with HUD until we get to that step. We've announced, um, you know, all that we know. We worked two years to get the grant done so that we can provide quality workforce housing for the families in Shreveport. We're not going to stop doing that because that's, that's our job. We partner with the Ha, Shreveport Housing Authority, and we're working with HUD through this process. They've done it with other cities around the nation. We were blessed to be able to get these, these funds, and our families deserve that. And we're gonna do it right.
That was how I understood it as well, Mayor. And I, you know, the only thing that I knew that had been discussed when I, when I initially heard this, I wondered if this may be the confusion, was there was a, uh, a community meeting where people were invited to come and give ideas of, you know, what they would like to see or not like to see. I'm sure there were some sketches that came out of that, but to my understanding, that was just an idea session.
That was just an idea session.
Typically happens in these kind of things, so.
Uh, Mr. Weiner? Thank you. And we're gonna move on to our next.
Okay, I just want to close with one sentence. Shreveport already has a black eye. Shreveport has a black eye with HUD. This is gonna make it worse, and you won't get any more grants.
Okay. Sammy Mears, a little levity.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. Not everyone does it, but there's been quite a few people who like to break laws or even the rules, which are for your own good. They really should not be doing this because it makes everyone else unhappy and very uneased. Just the other day, Don Hanley and myself were on our way to the Grace Baptist Church for a men's Bible study and coming home, and we were talking about why people want to zigzag between crossing gates at railroad tracks as an example. I asked Don Hanley if they get a big charge out of this, and when they, if they even do, and placing their lives at risk like that. And what he explained to me was that they might be in a hurry to get where they're going, but they shouldn't, they need to really stop and think about how much their lives mean to them, and I agree with him on that. When people do this, they're just kinda like a beaver, they just get in such a hurry that they don't really think, and that's what causes all the trouble at these tracks. So, the next time, if you are going to come to a railroad crossing with gates and flashing lights and they lower the gates, before you plan to zigzag, stop and think how much your life really means to you. Because if you break that, you're asking for trouble.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sammy. Okay, Mr. Jeffrey D. Jackson. He's gone? That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
You know, it feels like we're here kinda late, like, you know, like this has been kind of a long meeting, but, uh, for our current standards, but this would have been the fastest meeting we've ever had a few years ago, so.
We still have, we still have executive session.
Mr. Chairman. I, I was disturbed by Mr. Weiner's remarks. He, he made an accusation that I, I, and the mayor spoke on it, but I, but I just want to be clear, Mayor, uh, in regards, not this project, but in previous projects, when HUD money is utilized, do you know of any time that a reputable, qualified architect was not used?
I do not know since I've been mayor, I do not.
And it's almost, I mean, it's al, it's almost without, without reservation that, that they would not issue a contract for, for either construction or architectural if they did not meet a certain criteria?
Absolutely. And of course, we have Mr. Bobby Collins here who can really speak to it because he's been doing this a long time.
No, I, I, I don't need it, I, I'm just concerned that somebody come before this body, which we're televised throughout the city, and accuse the administration of not...
I know, I know.
... giving shabby or un, unqualified work.
We, we've never done that.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Collins. And, and quite frankly, oh, yeah, and Bobby's here, um, but quite frankly, I mean, this is a very detailed process. I mean, I was very open about what the steps are, and, you know, we've been very open in following the steps.
Very open. We've had all kind of meetings, public meetings, we've had all kind of public meetings on this.
Could you speak on that, sir?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm just a little set back because we have had meeting upon meeting in the community, many of you have been there, the design charuts to get the input from the folks who are gonna live there in the community. Uh, this is a very vetted and inclusive process, so I'm just really set back by it. But I can only chalk it up to somebody complaining about a vote last week that they weren't here for the debate for, so that might happen, I don't know, but this has been a very open process. Uh, there's been much participation, invited participation. Um, and, and now I will say that those plans are under review by Housing Network Development, and it's that for along in this process, and that's just where we are, and, uh, that's very disappointing to hear.
So, so what is the next stage that people can expect so that we understand, you know, when somebody comes to the, to the podium and is telling us they're seeing these things happen, what should we be looking for in that?
Hopefully in the next 30, 45 days, HUD's review, review will be finished, and then there's a review from Louisiana Housing Finance Agency, uh, to finalize the tax credit process, and that's when the plans will be finalized and we can begin the construction. But the, the input, I mean, the folks that are gonna live there and in the community, we've had, I mean, four, five meetings of, of, to get community input, design charuts and everything else, so to say that is just very disappointing.
Thank you, sir. I, I just be disturbed when people come make these, uh, these mysterious accusations.
If there's nothing else in this meeting, if the chairman, we'll be going directly into...
Especially you.